We call to order the meeting of the Town of Sebastopol Board of Supervisors for Monday, February 24 at 7:00. I'll ask that you rise and join with me in the Pledge of Believers.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call to establish a forum.
Supervisor Weidman.
Here.
Supervisor Teis.
Here.
Chairman Zipperer.
Here.
Supervisor Wolfel.
Here.
Supervisor Stavenas.
Here.
As is customary, we do start with the meeting. We greet the people that are with us tonight. We followed around with Laddie on the video. Start down on the end. Linda, you want to start?
Linda Waite, Clerk Treasure.
Dick Weidman, Board Supervisor. Chuck Teis, Supervisor.
Leo Zipperer, the Town Chair.
Dan Wolfel, Supervisor.
John Stavenas, Supervisor.
Go ahead.
Dan Mathi, Gordon Road.
Jim Mootson, River Road.
Tim Erlich, Fire Chief.
Jim Dittman, Assistant Fire Chief.
Steve Bobbitt, Sebastopol Town Resident.
Joan Jeskey, entire Jacksonport Town Resident.
Victoria Sarin, Sebastopol Resident.
Okay, and the bearded wonder is?
Gladys Kaplan, Sebastopol River.
Dick, if you'd like to get into preparation.
There's two of them here.
No, that's a growth in the last couple of months.
Yeah, takes time to get this to you. You're expecting it.
It's great. Looks good.
Well, thanks for being here. The agenda's been properly noticed?
It has.
Need a motion then to adopt it?
We approve the agenda in order. Second.
We will skip around a little bit. We're going to go to the special report first with fire, annual fire report, and then we'll go down to the resolution on the mutual aid box alarm system agreement. But everything else should follow in order. So with those notes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And as carried, we're a little ahead of schedule, but.
Great.
Chief Tim and Assistant Chief Tim, what is this? You only get a job if your name is Tim, is that?
Yeah.
All right, it's all yours. Go right ahead.
All right, this evening, we're going to just present the annual fire report for Sebastopol. I'd like to begin with our mission statement, which is, the Sturgeon Bay Fire Department's mission is to protect life and property from fire, medical, and environmental emergencies for our community through public education, code management, and incident response. The next slide really is just a list of our equipment, but I'd like to call attention to a couple specialty vehicles, and those are listed on the bottom, and that's a special response trailer, which has all kinds of specialty equipment in there, mostly for trench rescue, for decon, should there be some sort of hazardous material spill. We have jacks and air jacks and shoring and all kinds of things in that particular, in that trailer. We also have a small boat, 12-foot inflatable boat, and then our Marine One boat, which is listed on here. Okay, and that's the boat that we share with the police department. The police use it for patrol and the fire uses it for rescue. So what we do, and the reason I want to bring these, the two boats up, is what we do in Sebastopol River for response in this area is that we take both, one is by land and the other one by sea. Because of the different weather conditions, and we don't know what the lake is going to be like or the bay's going to be like, whether the people that need rescue are in really shallow water or not, we will take the small inflatable, rigid hull inflatable by land to the scene, and then our big boat leaves. That's in the water all the time, and that leaves directly from the dock. And it's pretty interesting, that's a fast, really fast boat, and that'll beat us most of the time to the scene over the truck and the rigid hull.
Where is that one? Down at dock, too?
That one is docked on by the DNR office, so it's a close response for the West Side guys to run down there.
We need to break the speed limit in that one.
Well, if it's an emergency, we're allowed to, which is a long trip back, especially if we're coming through the canal. Our, and probably, I know we've talked about this before, but for the people watching out there, oftentimes we get the question, why do we need all this ice rescue equipment? Why do we need all the water rescue equipment when we have three Coast Guard detachments in Sturgeon Bay? And the quick answer to that is that Coast Guard, excuse me, takes a minimum of 20 minutes to respond out of their station. It's just the way it is. It's not because they're not ready. They have to get approval from Coast Guard Milwaukee and sometimes from Cleveland before they can respond. So if you're the person in the water 20 minutes, oftentimes can be too long. This is just the list of our personnel, and one thing I wanted to note on this slide is that we do have four of our part-time personnel that live in Sebastopol that are Sebastopol Town residents. I mentioned it a few years ago, where we had passed an ordinance in the city allowing part-time firefighters to live either in Sebastopol or Town of Sturgeon Bay, which are the two townships we contract with. In Act 20 this year, in the governor's budget, was included a no residency law for municipalities. However, there was a, we could put on a 15-mile limit for firefighters and police officers, so the city's in the process of doing that. But all other residency requirements in municipalities has been lifted. And of course, police and fire and ambulance personnel, it's important to have a quick Total number of calls for the fire department received was 1,166. Number of calls in Sebastopol was 59, I think down one from last year. Is that correct?
Yep.
We had 57 fire calls, or what's classified in the national reporting system as fire calls, and two emergency medical calls that we provided backup as requested by the ambulance. Average response time in Town of Sebastopol was nine minutes and 42 seconds. For emergency calls, it was eight minutes and 58 seconds, and non-emergency, 10 minutes and 27 seconds. Sometimes those two, sometimes the non-emergent calls have a better response time than the emergent. It just depends where they are and given here throughout your township. Total staff hours, or total staff for all calls, was 346 staff members. Total staff hours were 311.22 hours. We provided 140 inspections, found 92 violations, and spent 108 hours inspecting. Each year, we put on public safety education programs. Sebastopol Elementary School is our big one, but we also, Career Day at NWTC, which includes all the high schools. And then we go in just a number of places, plus tours, where the schools come in and see us. This is the incident type broken down by group. Vehicle or heavy equipment fire, there was only one of those structure fires. We had four in Sebastopol last year, and I don't usually bring the previous year's report, and I forgot. I'm not sure how many structure fires there were the year before. Grass outside fires, we had six. Ice and water rescues, we had five. That number is going up, not just in Sebastopol, but in Sturgeon Bay and every place else we respond. It seems like there's more and more people using the jet skis, the kayaks, those types of things, and in the ice, of course. Service calls, one. Animal problem, one. I do not think that was a bear. I'm not sure what the animal was. Carbon monoxide incident, three. Two gas leaks. Threat to burn. That was an investigation on a person who was threatening to burn something down. Two fire investigations, one lockout, maybe a residential lockout. Assist police, and then smoker, odor scares. Number of dispatch and cancel calls were one. And then the detector activation, no fire. In other words, false alarms, we had 12 of those in the Town of Sebastopol. Now, none of those were, I shouldn't say none of them were, but most of them were just honest detector activations with no fire. Either dirty smoke detector, CO detector that went off for no reason, but a couple were from hotels, motels, where people, kids usually pull a pole station. So that was in today.
Are we going to a lot of repeat going to the same?
Our biggest one, there is an inn on Bay Shore Drive that has a fair number of smoke detectors that are aging, and they are replacing them as they grow. So they have stocked out with new ones there, and when they get faulty, then they put it in, replaces.
Have you instituted or instituted any kind of a fee charge for answering those?
You know, we have not. It hasn't been a big, I don't know, it hasn't been a big cost to us, and if somebody was, you know, if they weren't making an effort to change all those detectors, we would certainly look at something, but we haven't run into many troubles with that, so.
When you get one of those alarm calls, what equipment would normally go to the scene?
Both stations would respond, and then we would call a shift of part-time people in, which would be five firefighters besides, and they would start and route as well. So right away, both stations would go. But a lot of it goes on the information that we're given at dispatch. You know, a lot of times, it's a smoke detector, we don't see any smoke or fire. We do in services for all the hotels, motels, tell them, you know, what we want them to do when the alarm sounds. So we get some good information. If we get information that says, obviously, they smell smoke, that would be an all-call for all off-duty help and every PC equipment we have. So again, a lot of it depends on how the call comes in.
But a false alarm?
False alarm.
Would end up in a considerable manpower.
Yes, we are. Well, the four guys on duty is, you know, it's really just the cost of the gas and going. The five guys that we call in certainly is a cost factor, but again, I don't see any big pattern, like, it's not like 10 of those, 12 came from one place, you know. I think the most, that hotel, that is maybe four or something.
So the normal response is engine six, or do you have another one that would?
We have unit six, unit eight, and then the two tankers would be coming with the part-time guys, where four units would be responding to that alarm call.
Okay. That's a good job. All right.
If it happens to be the resort you have on the north end of Glidden Drive, typically we'll call in two shifts and get more guys going just because of the time that it takes to up there.
All right.
This one's an interesting thing, I don't know, the media loves it, I guess, but most common day to have a fire call is Friday and Saturdays this year that was tied. I think in the city, it was Saturday at 2:00 a.m. In Sebastopol, it's Friday or Saturday. And the most common hour was 3:00 in the afternoon, better than the 2:00 a.m. in the city.
Isn't that bar clothing?
Yeah. That has a lot to do with it. The total hours spent on Sebastopol incidents were 311. I think we went through this already. These are just a couple pictures that I want to point out, a couple interesting things. These were in Sebastopol structure fires. This one was in a small storage room. And what I want to point out for the public here is if they look at this door, and you can see that burn demarcation right there, this bathroom door was closed, and it's hard to see by the photos, but that's just a hollow core door that burns through relatively quick. But that bedroom, or that bathroom, right across from the room that was burning, was hardly touched because of that hollow core door being closed. The rest of the apartment, coming this way, all the way down, was as black as you see everything else along here. So my point is, anytime you can keep doors closed, you should do that. We tell people to keep bedroom doors closed and any door they can close, because even if it is a hollow core door, it'll really slow down the spread of fire. And in this case, it was just remarkable. Way on the other end of the apartment, the curtains, the light fixtures, everything were just all melted down from the heat because no doors were closed. You can see how that fire exited out. This was part of our investigation. That's what the room looked like initially, and then once we cleaned it out, take it right down to the floor piece by piece, and then reconstruct the room to determine the cause. This one was on South Cave Point Drive, and I bring this one forward because I think a lot of people have done what was inadvertently done in this house. This was a remodel job, and part of the house was remodeled, and the can lights, like you have under there, the new ones are thermally protected, so you can insulate over them. The old part of the house was not remodeled, and had can lights from the '70s in there prior to the thermal protection. When they remodeled, they had the insulators come in and re-insulate the whole house. The result was that they covered up this can light right here, out towards the eaves of the house, and the bathroom, it was in a bathroom, and that light was left on for an extended period of time in November through December, and started this particular house fire. I think about $160,000 worth of damage. Flames coming out of the attic, I don't want to call, it's called in, so. Just, you know, the blown-in insulation is great stuff, just make sure it's done correctly and not blown against light fixtures that get hot. And that's it. If there's any questions on our report or anything on fire?
I do know that you do twice-a-year inspection on our licensed beverage establishments?
Correct.
Do you have any kind of a report as far as how many of those you?
I do not have that with me unless broken down. Linda, how many licensed do you?
I think we have 14.
14 licensed. We do each of those, make sure we get those done by May or so, and then I usually send Linda to notice if there's a particular issue with any of those licensed facilities. And we've had that one problem, one. It's been annoying, and sometimes some of these places are, I don't want to pick on any one place, but you get them cleaned up, and, you know, six months or a year later, they have a tendency to go back to that same ways. We try to keep our handle on them best we can.
Leo, can I ask him a question, please?
Thank you, sir.
How do you determine if they're thermally insulated, these cannons? Are we got someone that are 23-years-old down in our house?
The light fixtures should be tagged that is thermal insulated, otherwise you'll see a sensor up in the light that shuts it down should it get too hot.
Should be labeled or a sensor?
Yep, should be labeled right up on the top, or sometimes it's on the side of the light fixture.
If not, get it off and change.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Well, I mean, if there's anything the fire department can do in helping clean up some of the neighborhoods, we've got a house that's been burned out for several years now, and the lawn and the yard is a filthy mess. Is there anything in the fire department regulation than that that would help?
There is, if we can determine that it is a fire hazard or a health hazard, we can go to the health officer. But if it's a fire hazard, I think we had a barn, or a small shed on South Fox Lake Road, wasn't it, that I wrote the owner up the letter and?
At Cave Point?
Oh, Cave Point. And wrote a letter, and they ended up tearing it down. So I'd be more happy to look at it for you if you'd like, get together. Sure, give me a call, and we'll take a look, maybe when the snow melts a little more, and get a better view of it that way.
What an year.
Just hoping the snow doesn't melt. Okay, no other questions. Let's go down to the agenda item would be Resolution 2014-01, which is the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Agreement. It indicates that we're going to do this with our neighboring states as well. So we'll, why don't you explain it to us, and then we'll act on it after you tell us what it's all about.
I won't go into all the intricate details of it, but as you may be aware of, all the fire departments in Door, Kewanee County have had a signed mutual aid agreement for many years. A number of years ago, they came out with the MAVESS system, Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Agreement. And that really was a result of 9/11, Hurricane Katrina, and some bigger disasters across the country. And where it became popular in Wisconsin was down around the borders, Kenosha and those areas, where oftentimes they needed specialty requests or specialty mutual aid from across the border, and that made things even more complicated. So they came out with this MAVESS system. The state has adopted it by statute, and the importance, as I see of it, is that should or when the big one hits Door County, and we don't have enough resources within Door or even Kewanee County to either handle it immediately, or if it's a sustained incident such as a major tornado would be, we can call upon mutual aid from wherever and get it free as long as we follow the protocols on doing that. And that's huge, because if we had to call in Green Bay and Antlauq or even Milwaukee for something, the cost of that would be astronomical. So really, it's a statewide mutual aid. There's no charge for labor, no charge for equipment. Along with that is a box card system. You've probably seen or watched movies where they'll call for, the fire department will call for a third alarm or a fourth alarm or a fifth alarm, and the county will have, the fire departments in the county will develop that card system so that we can call in the dispatch and be predetermined. If we call a box alarm number two from Sturgeon Bay, say somebody else is calling it from Sturgeon Bay, that box alarm number two will say, this is what they want, and it dictates what's going to respond. The most recent use of the state's mutual aid system was in the Plasky Fire a year or two ago, when like half the downtown burned. That was a mutual aid system. Green Bay's been using it for a couple of years. They were part of that Plasky Fire. Interestingly enough, Green Bay actually calls for the mutual aid from surrounding areas more than the surrounding areas from Green Bay. And that's because Green Bay's kind of downsized and don't have as many engine companies at a station. So when they have a large fire, they have to move more of their stations in towards that fire, which leaves the outlying stations empty. Through this system, through the box card alarm system, Green Bay calls for a box alarm powered or one of those townships moves in, so. You know, that's kind of all of our operational stuff and tactical stuff. The big deal here is to ensure that we can get mutual aid free, and that's really the reason for the resolution. We are one of the last, there's four counties left in the state that have not signed on to it. The other good part is we can deny or turn down a request. Say we have stuff going on here, you know, the tornado hit several counties or whatever, and they call Sturgeon Bay or whomever bugged or for help. If we're all busy, we can turn that down, and then they just move to the next card to the next location. But we've been on Kewanee's for about a year now. If they have fires, then we would move up to Algoa or Casco, wherever they would need us.
I read through the agreement, and I find that it was important for Illinois and Wisconsin counties or units to coordinate the mutual effort. I thought we bordered also on Minnesota, Iowa, and Michigan, but there's nothing to mention that in here.
There is not, and those states are moving into the MAVESS as well. Wisconsin does have mutual.
But they're not part of anything now?
I don't know how much of them or how much they are. I know Wisconsin has an agreement with Minnesota for forest fires, because we don't have any air support in the state of Wisconsin. They'll come out of Minnesota when there's a forest fire. I have had our city attorney, Randy Nesbit, review the contract and the agreement, and he has approved it as far as the city goes, and it's Randy, your attorney as well, so don't pay him to look at it, or we already did.
As I read through this, it sounds like should Sturgeon Bay be called out to, say, Green Bay, your first obligation would be to staff their firehouse while their people are out doing, fighting the fire or taking care of the situation, but that could change?
That can change, yes. Just like mutual aid works now, sometimes, you know, if we come up here, we'll have Southern Door coming to our West Side station and cover that for us. But when we call mutual aid, or somebody else calls us for mutual aid, we may be fighting fires, we may be hauling water, they may need us for confined space stuff, wherever they need us, whatever they need. But the whole idea of it is not to leave any community bare, and oftentimes that happens with mutual aid. Mutual aid is called, and everybody comes running. They kind of forget about covering their own area when that happens.
So the call from another department requesting a specific engine, the determination is up to you as to whether or not you're going to allow that to happen?
Correct. As long as we're not busy, we'll go. And if they request, for example, two engines and two tankers from Sturgeon Bay, we'll send them, but now that leaves us really short. So that's then when we would call our box alarm into dispatch, and they would have another department move up into Sturgeon Bay.
The agreement also went on to say, should we need that equipment back home, you have the right to bring it back home, too.
Correct.
Eventually, the guy in Key West does not get any fire protection. He gets sucked down, so there's nothing there.
It really is a good deal for us.
But you'll never run out of water.
You know, the reason we haven't joined this earlier is because we looked at Door County, you know, a few years ago and said, you know, we can't pull from the east, we can't pull from the west, we really have a good system going. Do we really need to do this? But when it became clear that if we don't do it, we will be billed for outside services, that's when we decided, well, just last week or the week before, to go.
Do we have any other concerns or questions, comments? Entertaining motion then to approve Resolution 2014-01.
I approve the Resolution Number 2014-01 TV.
I'll second that.
Motion made in the second, outside of a typographical on page two. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it is carried. We thank you for your time, and.
Thank you.
I'll share you the information. Thanks for coming.
Yes, you have. Stay at work. Stay off the ice coming April or so. I thought, too?
Maybe.
Yeah, okay.
Are you going to have a Fish and Sturgeon Bay deal again this year?
Yes, they are. Am I going to? Am I going to personally? No. That turned out not to be, that was the first slide. That turned out to be a non-for-profit ordeal.
I think everybody was well pleased and they thought it was a good deal.
I have some ideas.
We missed your carving ice this past weekend.
Yeah. You see a lot of them are destroyed already or it's knocked them off and stuff.
Oh, I thought they melted.
You've been in Florida before.
All right, thanks guys. Okay, let's back up a little bit. Number four on the agenda would be public participation. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to make a statement now?
I would like to make a statement in support of the homeowner well order testing program, but I can't wait until you reach that on your agenda.
We'll call on you then. Okay. Anyone else, Joe?
My name's Joan Jeskey, recently retired principal for Sebastopol Schools. I'm making my rounds around to the town boards in Door and Keyone County because I'm seriously considering throwing my hat in the ring for the open first assembly seat for Gary Beis' seat. So I'm getting to know the local town boards. My wife used to serve up at the town board in Jacksonport and this is where real legislation and accountability happens. So I want to thank you for the work that you do and hopefully if I should be fortunate to work for you someday, that we will stay in close communication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
And you're welcome to stay out. We go till about midnight.
I have been in many meetings till midnight.
Oh, yeah, that's right, school board. Okay, anyone else?
I've got a comment from some of our constituents that time again in the year about snowplows versing mailboxes.
The mailbox loses.
We've got a few in the neighborhood who insist that the snowplow has actually hit the mailbox and the mailbox has been put up according to regulations that the highway department supplied them and they're getting a little upset that they have to keep replacing these mailboxes. I don't know if talking to the plow operators or the highway department administrator is going to do any good. Some people already feel that they opened their mouth and now this is retaliation, so...
They can't put a flame in though, right?
The process is that you call the highway department and give your name and address and what kind of mailbox it was and what kind of damage is there and they do have one of their supervisors come out and take a look. And he does an assessment and then it comes back to the commissioner for approval, either on replacement or else it goes to the committee, the highway committee for the eventual replacement. So if we're just going to talk about it and not report it, that's one thing, but they have been pretty good as far as going back out and actually putting up new ones, so. Okay. You've got one on the floor. Yes, sir?
They use the criteria for a state highway to set your mailboxes. Now, does that also apply to town boards?
The setting of the mailboxes are an agreement between the postal department and the transportation, whether it be county, state, or I don't know if we have any, but we would use the same criteria.
What I'm getting at is a state highway has wider roads and wider shoulders. Your town highways don't have that, but they use that when they judge whether that mailbox is set legal or illegal, right?
I would guess that they do, yes.
Yeah, but how can that be?
The information I've seen, I don't believe that it's the same. The information I have obtained specifies the distance from the center of the road to the mailbox and it specifies the height of the mailbox from the road surface to where the door opens.
Yeah, you've got a height and a distance from the center of the road, then you've got a distance from off of the blacktop to the shoulder. I've only seen one regulation on that and that's for state highways.
I've seen the drawing to indicate what needs to be and it has to be recollecting, I think, eighteen inches away from the edge of the road, the travel portion of that road, forty-two inches above the ground and whatever the other regulation. It has to be something that's going to be easily removed or if it's hit by a car or something else other than a plow, that it is going to bend or it is going to break. You cannot construct anything in concrete and put it out there because those have already been removed. We have some in our town that had to be relocated the very same way, so. I can look into it, but I don't have an answer for you tonight.
Does the county follow the roads that come town plowing?
Correct. The county of Door follows the roads for the town.
It's really a county matter rather than a town matter.
I can't hear you.
Is this not really more of a county matter than a town matter at this point?
Well, if we can provide the information and let them know what the problem is, we can do that. Thank you. Any other coming? All right, I'll check into it. I'm on the highway committee for the county, so I should be able to get an answer. Okay, no other public participation. Let's move on to number seven, the approval of the minutes, January 20th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, January 20th, 2014.
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments, corrections? You're reading that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As carried, financial report for January 2014 budget versus actual account, the balances and transactions. Do we have any questions there?
Yeah, on page two, budget versus actual, near the bottom under Town Park. Just want to know what that $2,220 represented and why it was $1,000 over budget.
Do you want me to respond?
Sure. If you have the answer, you go right ahead.
Yes, I believe the 20, we prepaid the landscaping application, as you know, I believe you questioned that last month. So we prepaid that because we could save a couple hundred dollars. I believe the total bill was $2,800 some. I prorated it between the town hall grounds and the park grounds and because we were into a two-year contract and because we did have a discount and if need be, if the park committee meets and decides that they want to move some funds from their capital fund to cover that, that's fine, that would be up to the park department.
Okay. Then the bill on page, page one, I think, of transactions, that bill from Spring Green, $2,776, what does that represent?
Twenty-two hundred of it was allocated to the park. The other 500 or whatever was allocated to the town hall.
So that's the actual bill?
Correct.
Okay. Now, just as point of information, so back, you know, last meeting, we talked about payment that was made in the 16th of December, the Spring Green for $2,776.
Did that actually represent services for 2013? No, it's 2014 contract.
So we're paying up to 2015 now on this contract?
No.
So how do we pay twice for 2014?
We don't.
So...
It's budgeted for 2014.
So the bill...
It may have been on the December bill payment, but it's posted to the 2014 budget.
But it was taken out of 2013 funds.
It's posted to the 2014 budget, put it that way.
But it's taken out of the 2013 funds?
No, because it's posted on the budget right here for 2014.
But payment was made in 2013.
Correct.
Right. Out of 2014 budget?
Correct.
Okay. So we have paid for 2014 for Spring Green to do the landscape maintenance.
Uh huh.
Now, this bill that we received on 1-1 of 2014 represents 2014 again or 2015? It's only 2014.
It's only 2013 and 2014.
So we've already paid that amount?
We have paid for 2014.
This coming year?
Correct.
So why are we seeing a bill from the same company appearing on here for 2014?
Because it's the 2014 contract.
Uh huh.
We paid...
We paid for it in 2013.
I believe we paid $2,999 in 2013 and we're going to pay $2,875 in 2014.
For 2015.
It's posted to the 2014 budget.
Well, I still can't get this clarified.
No, I think what's happening here is you're getting confused between the accounting of it and we use the money, she used funds available to prepay it to take advantage of the discount, but as far as when it actually goes on the books, it shows up as a 14 transaction. That's what it is.
Same thing with our fire protection. I have to pay the fire protection by December 31st for the January 2014 quarter. So I pay it in December of 2013, but it's posted to 2014 because that's where the coverage is.
Only a single payment and what will happen is the accountants will move it back to the year that it belongs in as well.
So the check that was written on 12/16 of 2013 is actually paying for the bill that was submitted 1-1, 2014?
Correct.
Okay. And that's a one-year contract?
It was a two-year contract, 2013, 2014. So we're in the second year of the two-year contract.
Okay.
Okay?
I think it's all on accountability and how it comes out in the actual versus the budget.
Another example would be our room tax. We don't receive our room tax for December of 2013. I just received it the other week. It's posted to 2013 even though we received it in 2014, so.
Any other questions, comments?
None.
Need a motion then to approve and place it on file?
Move that we approve financial report, January 2014, budget versus actual, account balances and transactions.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moral committee reports and committee minutes. Do you have any questions on those that were provided with your packet? If there are none, they'll be accepted and placed on file. Do we have any oral committee reports?
We've got a quick one from the Sturgeon Bay Visitor Center, which we are a partner in on the fire and ice weekend, which was February 15, 16, dealing with the snow carvings and the ice sculptures. The weekend turned out to be great. The weather was nice. We had plenty of good snow this year for a chance and some of the winners in the advanced stage, first place went to David Mylan, his skating penguin, which was sponsored by the Brick Alley. The second place went to Walter Ash, hand holding a paintbrush, that was sponsored by the Artist Guild. Third place went to David Bartel's Bear, sponsored by Gwendolins. The intermediates, first place, Tracy Robinson and Teresa Gore, Angel Fish, sponsored by the Door County Eye Association Associates. Second went to Kristen Kelson, Child's Blocks, sponsored by Child's Play. Third place went to Cody Leist, Lighthouse, sponsored by Monticello. In the beginners class, first place went to Elena Perret at Apple, sponsored by Dancing Bear. Second place went to Kate Waracheck and Jackie Simon, Mask, sponsored by Hot Tamale's. The youth class, first place went to Kate Waracheck and Jackie Simon, The Mask, sponsored by Hot Tamale. People's Choice went to Max Martin, The Woodpecker, and that was sponsored by Associated Bank. I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the weekend and we look forward to the next doings, which will be the St. Patrick's Day parade.
Okay, do we have any other oral committee reports?
I'll take that.
Hearing none, licenses and permits that were issued. Our construction is down to zero. Pending business, the status discussion in action, potential rezoning of the core areas. If you'll notice that we have two pending and then we have a whole bunch of new business. Our chairman of our plan commission is going to run the meeting for the next hour and a half.
All right. All right. The potential rezoning of the core areas. We had a meeting the 21st of February and we came up with, we were going to place the rezoning on hold for now, but we're going to use it as a tool for future requests. And we're also working on a press release that will come out so that we can notify everybody of the, of what is actually going on. And if you have in your packet, there was a colorful thing that green was good and red and yellow were iffy and there wasn't a whole lot of green in there, so the overall response was to do nothing at this time.
We did have some support though.
We did have some support, very few, but some support.
Correct. Is this colorful survey report and the maps available here in our office or...
Sure, I got how many copies you want.
At the county or where?
Yeah, for sure.
Anybody wanting to have them can pick them up? Yes?
Are they on our website or are they on the county's website?
They are on Door, the initial presentation is on the Door County Planning and Zoning website and I also have a link from the town website, so I guess my question would be, will this be placed on the planning and zoning website and then we can place it on ours as well?
Okay.
Did you want... All the responses?
Uh huh, this mapping right here.
Well, the map, I don't know about the personal responses if we, I mean, the map certainly would be appropriate. I mean, designate areas, people, but I'm not sure we want to put the...
The individual names?
Individual names, property owners.
Well, I think that's all public record anyway.
Yeah, it should be.
I mean, we talked about sending out letters to each and every one of these people.
Okay.
That's quite an undertaking of mailing though. Again.
Okay, so there are no activity on behalf of this board that we have to do?
Not at this time, we're just going to use it as a...
You're recommending that it is be placed on hold?
Placed on hold, yes.
Okay. Linda, you got that recorded? Linda, you got that recorded?
Yes.
Okay, comprehensive plan, annual review, the plan commission comments, recommendations?
We have two of them, the town board. Should adjust the core area boundaries to line up with the lot lines, is the first one. A lot of the, when the red goes, the different colors go around, it doesn't match up with the property lines. So we were going to just square it off to a property line, so it's more of a distinct line.
Is something we do, or the county does, or?
The county.
The county does. We recommend it to them. So, and then the other one was for the comprehensive plan. We're going to work on a couple of pages to act as our update for the existing comprehensive plan, so that we don't have to reinvent the whole thing, so.
Okay.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Makes a lot of sense. Plus, I think we're going to do something in regards to the latest census information, I think?
Yeah, the 2010 census, we were going to have a page to link, add a page there to link, so that they knew how to get, was it through our website or through the county's website to the census?
It's the county's website.
The county is.
The county has all the information.
Okay, if you're done with that one, let's go into new business. Plan Commission report, recommendation?
Future land use?
Update on the current or future land use.
Okay, recommend that existing land use maps reflect all conditional use permits that were approved since 2008. And on the committee minutes, at the very last page, there was a list that we were going to give them. Well, it was right at the end, so. And then we should change future existing land use maps to include the existing commercial zoned area for future development. Some of the commercial development isn't quite right on some of the maps, so we got to get that straightened out.
You're going to keep that on your agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Very well.
Supervisor, could I ask a question?
Yes.
As far as reporting this to the county, is there anything that the clerk would need to report to the county at this time regarding future land use?
Well, we were going to give them a copy of our agenda, but, you know, we need the list, to give them the list and those two items. One was the conditional use permits that we wanted on there, and then the other one was changing the future existing land use map with, and have the commercial, existing commercial marked correctly.
Okay.
Which is in our agenda, or in our minutes.
In the minutes.
Okay, Act 170, the next one on your list there, or not?
Yep.
Could you just tell us what it's all about?
Well, yes, it's a, I mean, it's a guide so that in zoning, you can, it's a guide for non-conforming structures and substandard lots in shoreline areas. So it's, it's like an elaborate point system that you can get points for doing this and points for doing that. I don't know, it's self, kind of self-explanatory, but it's confusing, too, so.
Was this a presentation to your commission, or what?
No, I think that was.
It was the public educational session that the Planning and Zoning sponsored. I attended, Victoria attended, and Darryl Van Berg attended. So these were part of the handouts.
Very good. So was there a lot of change to the shoreline zoning regulations, or just reaffirmed?
The DNR hasn't acted this, I believe, correct? The DNR hasn't acted it. It's, does reverse some of the, the old regulations. It actually lightens up, I think, the shoreline zoning a little bit. And as Supervisor Stavenas mentioned, a homeowner, say you would want to expand existing structure, whatever, you, as Supervisor Stavenas said, you can gain these extra points by maybe screening or voluntarily setting it back further from the high water mark. The mitigation manual kind of addresses that as well. And the Door County Corporation Council is in the process of doing the proposed ordinance to affect.
I see on page five, you have some new language for the NR 115 and Act 170. That would be for non-conforming uses of structure and lots. So does that mean that it's a big change, or not?
Thank you. The Act and the 115 changed the setback rule for non-conforming structures. It used to be 75 feet from the high water mark. If your structure was within that area, you couldn't make any change to that structure at all. And now it's 35 feet.
I see that now.
So it's a, it's a big advantage to the owner of an existing structure if they want to make an update or change to that, a modification, they have more opportunity now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions on the information provided?
Just the one that came up a little while back, where they also talked about impervious surfaces? I think it's part of this.
It's part of the mitigation handbook, that if you increase the amount of impervious surfaces, they have a table where you can trade off and say, well, you've made more impervious here, put more screening there, we'll give you these points, take away those.
So that's all part of this? Thanks.
Okay, petition for Door County zoning text amendment, temporary uses?
Yeah, I think we've went over this about four times now, but we, as the Planning Commission, recommended no change to be made for the current number of days allowed in a calendar year. And the current number is 10, so you can have one a month.
Your recommendation was six, or something, or?
Huh?
We were recommending six, or something, or?
Yeah, we were, but we changed that, so.
Okay.
So you can have 10, you can have all 10 in a row, or you can have one here, one there, and be done with it, so.
So that's still coming up to, did you refund, or not?
We will respond, I see. It's in our minutes, so.
All right. We, we think, we recommended the stated temporary uses that were presented to the RPC Board, didn't we?
Yeah. We recommended no change.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So. So.
We're going along with their recommendations.
Correct.
Okay, letter D, that is a Steve Lobenstein discussion on the potential rezoning of parcels at 4,001 State Highway 4257. Steve is present, you want to come forward, or you want to do it from there?
Whatever, whatever's best for you guys.
As long as we can hear you out here.
I brought some maps with me, so why don't I come forward, that's okay?
All right, very good.
No, that's not the job, just passes down. I'd like to rezone 44A on the land use, on the web map that I copied off. I have 44A and 43A. I'd like to rezone 44A to commercial. On your future land use map of the Thomas of Astapool, it's marked out on 44A showing approximately 15.6 acres, and 44A is 18.92 acres. Getting back to what John said before, just a minute ago, he'd like to square the section off, and I think that'd be probably a good idea. Of that 18.92 acres I'd like to rezone, there's 3.66 acres of unusual setback lines from the state highway. So I just want you to take that into consideration also. This is where your former building, well, you want to, this is where the owners located. Yes, that is correct. And I own 44A and 43A.
On the web map, you've got 450 feet from the highway mark, a little line.
That's mine, that's not my line, that's what, that's what Kate.
Yeah, I went down to the Door County Planning Department, and they did a, they scaled it out, and I can't tell you how they did it, but they figured it was 450 feet from the center of the road. And.
It goes back to when we did the comprehensive plan, and we did the coloring. We had the crayons where every person that wanted the red marking to go commercial, they drew a line, so that's how many people were there, so that's where they got the 450 feet.
And I know Dick said last week at the Planning Department meeting, that it might be wise to just straighten it out, and square it off, or else, you know.
Yeah, that, that measurement, I think, is kind of arbitrary. I mean, they, obviously, from, they interpreted that from those, the maps we had back during that session, so.
That we worked very hard on.
That we worked very hard on. In my mind, it represents, you know, not exactly 450 feet, because when those maps were filled in, we didn't take that into consideration, the exact measurement from the highway. It was, to me, it's more of an arbitrary thing.
Okay, then if you want to do this whole lot, the next lot over is 80 acres, you want to do that whole one, too?
Well, what's in the, I'm totally confused.
Well, you got to set someplace.
Well, I guess so, but I mean, we're, if we just deal with 44A, the parcel that he's talking about, okay?
Correct.
Whether it's 450 feet, or 500 feet, or 600 feet, I would rather consider the whole parcel than just the 450-foot corridor that had been established by the Planning Department from our mapping session.
But also, we wanted to keep the rural character, too.
Well, I mean.
Can I?
Sure, go ahead.
The rural character can be kept in a lot of different ways, and I just want to grab something, if that's okay here. And I was reading over this, here from the Planning Department, or I from the Planning Department, is, is that, this is their Door County Comprehensive Plan, that kind of contradicts everything, as far as I'm concerned. It says, guy, they're going to direct the screening and condition of use permits, what I can do there, and what I cannot do there. And I'll pass this along also, and if you'd like to read this, what it says, regulate new development to fit the country, counties, community, but maximize the visual impact. Guide highway corridor development and improve corridor appearance so as to maximize blend of the community and preserve the country's scenery. Work to preserve open green spaces between community and long highway. Any future corridor development should be well screened, well, I'm sorry, any future corridor development should be well screened and designed. When reviewing condition of use permits and rezoning, consider highway corridor appearance. Encourage country lanes signage, that ends there. Would you like to look at this? But it says, they really, when you go to the RPC for a permit, or you go to the county for a permit, you have regularizations, what you can do and what screening is taking effect. So they really set the guidelines of everything as far as screening, as far as setbacks, so there's going to be some guidelines that are going to be set by them.
If, if you're granted a commercial, if you're granted a commercial rezoning for that parcel, once it's, once it's rezoned commercial, then the regulations within that classification, you have to meet.
That is correct.
I mean, that, to me, that's really the question here, is whether or not that parcel lands.
Okay, you're talking about two parcels here, 44A, why don't you give us an idea of what it is, where it is?
I'm lost, but I think I figured it out, but what you're.
44A is what?
44A is.
Is where is existing offices.
Right across from Grandma Tommy's.
Okay.
It's the White House and the White Barn, right across from Grandma Tommy's.
The White House sits at the southern edge, maybe 200 feet?
Yes, that's correct.
To the boundary, and then the rest, to, all the way up to.
Driveway that goes into Grandma Tommy's, between the Realtor's office, almost, right?
Would that be the other boundary?
It goes.
Pretty close.
If you're familiar, yes, real close. It's basically, there's a fourplex that Robert Guyton owns, that my mother used to own. The property line is right across from that.
Okay.
But I own 43A and 44A, and I ask you to zone 44A.
So, but what the line represents?
Is what we, what I put in at our meeting, is 450 feet coming off from our maps over there.
Right.
Is what, with the session, how wide.
How wide a commercial strip.
Commercial strip.
You're going to allow or suggest, versus rezoning the entire parcel?
Correct.
If you understand that.
Remember, I got to take.
If you look at this, though, the parcel that would be left after that 450 feet is very minimal.
Yeah.
And what you really did is you landlocked it between that commercial, and on the other side, we have a wetland.
It's going down to the.
It's still high ground there, but 43A is still high ground.
It definitely makes sense to allow that parcel in its entirety to be commercial, rather than to just chop off the 450 feet of front.
And it's some of the highest property on that corridor area, where I'm, where that is.
Right.
But if you want to stay with, stay within. If you want to stay within the comprehensive plan.
You've got this little green triangle right here that would be left.
Well, you could also just attach that to 44B.
43A.
43, whatever the number is, just make it part of the other parcel.
You stopped worrying about this little corner?
Yeah, I would take off that other corner then, for it doesn't intrude on, intrude on 43A then.
Okay.
You know? And it's only, what it is, you're losing 3.6 acres in the setbacks from the state highway. Right now, 44A is 18.92 acres, and what it shows on the Smart Growth Plan of Thomas Vasco, which you measured off, is 15.68 acres.
And this piece here on this map, John, that's Grandma Tommy's right now?
No.
Right? No?
Grandma Tommy's would be up in there.
Oh, here, oh, that's, oh, this is, I know what I'm talking about, I got you, sorry.
Because that'd be the mill.
Right.
The circle for.
Looking down the corner.
Okay. Steve, I guess, you know, where do you want to stop? Because I guess my point is, if it's 450 feet wide, then that, I'm pretty sure that next adjacent property there, you know, that's.
You don't want it to go all the way deep.
That's an 80-acre field there. It's a huge field, so do you want to just zone that commercial, too, right away?
There's nobody applying to have that rezoned. I mean, what's, what's being questioned right now is the tract of land that Steve is presenting to us to be. is the tract of land that Steve is presenting to us to be.
Correct. And Steve was our smart growth.
The parcel next to it is a totally different story. I mean, it's still general ag. So, I mean, what those people would want to do, they'd have to go through the same process that, that Steve would go through.
That's correct.
To get it rezoned. So we're not setting any precedent here by, by granting Steve. I mean, if, if in fact Steve is granted rezoning commercial, that doesn't set a precedent for the next parcel.
I, I don't have any problem with changing that zoning on that strip, but I don't think I'd want it to go all the way back for that whole parcel.
Well.
I mean, I, I would just, we have a, they have a commercial, or excuse me, you have a plan that says that you should have that strip and you try to adhere to it. Otherwise, the next one comes along and wants to do eighty acres.
That would be an individual, I mean, that would be another case.
I understand that. I'm just saying, but now you've got a situation where the next one comes along and says, well, you zoned this whole parcel. Why not, you know, your plan says you should do less than that. And certainly, there's a lot of room in four hundred and fifty feet.
Right now, you are requesting the whole parcel, right? Forty-four A.
I am requesting the whole parcel, which is eighteen point nine two acres. I will take the recommendation the board gives me if they want to go with fifteen point nine, fifteen point six acres. I just want to remind you, there's, no matter what, there's three point, three point six acres, six, six acres coming off the top because of setbacks from the highway.
Right.
So either I have fifteen acres or I have twelve acres of commercial.
And I, and I agree with Chuck. I mean, why, why segregate off that one point three acres or whatever for the sake of, of the, you know, not going beyond the four hundred and fifty feet? We've already got four hundred and fifty feet of exposure of commercial property. What behind it is not going to be a significant.
I think we all agree, we, we all agree that it shouldn't just be a, a drawn line across a parcel to be in compliance with the four hundred. So it doesn't make any sense. All right. The biggest problem that we do have is here for discussion only. We cannot come up with any recommendation. I think Steve wanted to bring it to us. So that we didn't hear about it from somebody else and that John disrearıd was through your plan commission?
Correct.
Was it an item for discussion or just for review?
It was an item for discussion.
Okay, so, once you make application through the county, then it comes to us and we give it to our plan commission for a recommendation to go backwards. Normally, it's a twenty-eight day notification, but I think what you're hearing tonight is maybe you want to go for the entire parcel? Which one would that be? Forty-four A?
Forty-four A, yes.
Does that make sense to you?
It makes a sen, a lot of sense if it squares off, squares off that property. And it doesn't intrude on forty-three A then either. Because forty-three A is captured in that four hundred and fifty foot setback.
Yeah.
Line that is established from the center of the road. So then it doesn't include forty-three A, which is another twenty-eight acres, which I'm not asking for rezoning.
Okay, very good. Is that okay with you? Is that what you had in mind?
Right. I, I can't see any other way of doing it.
Chuck, line it up.
I would be okay with it.
Great. So I think we have a consensus. You, you're okay with that too?
No.
No?
No. It's, because the consensus in our minutes say that rezoning the westerly four hundred and fifty feet parallel to the state highway forty-two fifty-seven, parcels forty-three A, forty-four A, is consistent with the future use of this land as described in the Sebastopol Comprehensive Plan.
I agree with John.
We spent.
Not that that matters.
A year and a half, almost two years getting that comprehensive plan together. Now, if we're going to just do whatever we want, then. You were, you were in agreement with this too the other night?
Well, I was in agreement with the four hundred and fifty feet. To me, that's an arbitrary number, because when we drew those maps up, we didn't, we didn't say exactly four hundred and fifty feet. We, we filled in an area.
Correct.
For, for commercial development. And to me, I mean, we didn't, we didn't get to the point where we detailed it to, to actual plots.
Each one of those lines represented a certain area. So if there was, if there was fifty people that drew a line, that's what made it wider. If there were two people, it made it narrower. So each person that drew a line or wanted it there, it grew or shrank.
Right.
So it was in consensus with the coloring program when we had our comprehensive plan.
You know, I see your point. But I mean, also, when we, when we, we're talking about updating our, our, our land usage maps that we have, we're talking about not cutting up parcels and including entire parcels into, into the various areas. So in this particular case, we would cut up a parcel of land with nine tenths of it being zoned commercial and one tenth of it remaining as agricultural. Wouldn't make much sense to me. I mean, we're already talking about updating this land use map to represent the actual parcels that are out there.
Well, then I think the next guy that comes in is going to want his whole parcel done too.
Well, if you look at our comprehensive plan, that is not law. That was ideas and suggestions, and it's no different than people wanting to build on their shore lots or anything else. You've got variances. You change rules and regulations to suit what the system is or what needs to be done there, so.
But it's a guide.
It's a guide, and that's all it is.
And it says to guide us at four hundred and fifty feet.
So coming out of your plan commission was that you were not in favor?
We were in favor of having it rezoned, but the four hundred and fifty feet, not the whole parcel. But he also, at the time, he presented forty-three A, which he has dropped out of now. So I guess it's, everything, it's changed just a little bit, but. And it was just information too. It's nothing sealed. He's got to go and get a plan. But he just wanted us to feel us out and see, you know, what we felt.
What did we, Steve, you, I'm sure you remember this. What did we do on Grandma Tommy's? Was that all commercial at the time, or was it country?
Countryside.
Countryside.
There was two different parcels there. One was countryside. No, it was all countryside, but there was two different parcels there. And what we did, we rezoned the top part to commercial and the bottom part stayed in countryside, just like we have now. And we called that an outlot, okay? And the outlot was used for similarities as this could be used for drainage ditches, retention ponds, not buildable ever. And that's how we did it there. I, I just make, it just makes sense just in this parcel. I'm not saying the eighty acre parcel make it all commercial. I'm not saying that. But in this parcel, it just makes sense, it seems to make sense to square off this to make it right. First of all, it doesn't protrude on forty-three A and it squares off forty-four A. And it's, as I said, if this would be, it would only be about fifteen acres of commercial area to, to work with. And I'm, and I'm, my guidelines are with, also with many different permits I would have to go through, condition of use permits, and when I do decide what I'm going to do with this. And I have some thoughts on it all, so.
And then we had, going back quite a while ago, we had Zans come in here and talk about rezoning their parcel, but they never actually did that, right?
They had to.
They were going to delineate the wetlands.
And they never did that.
And they never did that. So nothing ever happened to Zans either.
Yeah, I had the paperwork on that too, with what it was focused on, but.
Have you checked into anything, Steve? If that is zoned commercial, what will, will you be required to put in a frontage road to assess those properties?
Right now, I am required to take out the two driveways going in to my own office, which he is leasing my office space. I have a double driveway going in there. I'm required to take that off and make a frontage road as I do on the east side of the road like Grandma Tommy's, with one driver coming in.
Considering the four hundred and fifty feet, that sixty-six feet of that is going to wind up as road. And you've got to be seventy-five feet off the highway. So I mean, that parcel gets smaller and smaller as you, as you go along there.
And that was put in the, that is documented in the courthouse that that's what I asked you done, because the DOT looked at it and that's what they recommended. And for driveway changes, I had to go along with that. And I think that was probably the best bet, where they decided to bring one in on the other property and take the two O. So I'm bringing one in and taking two O. Can I do do something on that side?
Well, you can see that we don't all agree. Go ahead.
Well, I think if, depending on what he comes back to show us in terms of what he thinks that a lot will look like and the way he would use it, that would play, I think, into the conversation.
He makes the actual application.
Right.
Right.
And you know, maybe the solution is not.
Well, when he makes the application, he's going to make an application to rezon the property. He doesn't have to tell you what he's going to do with it. Or he can say he's going to do one thing and whatever.
I mean, yeah, there's certain guidelines in the commercial zoning classification that restricts him to various developments, so.
I mean, you see what I done over Grandma Tommy's. It looks pretty, very nice, I believe. And I would take that into consideration on the other side when I do something over there also, but.
Right.
It looks top notch, I believe.
But my point is, I, I was spent a year and a half on this comprehensive plan and I'd really like to stick to it. And there was a lot of other people that put a lot of, you know.
I was there too.
Effort into it.
Okay, I see your hand up, but this isn't really a hearing, but I'll allow you to speak.
Steve, if you abandon the two driveways and they're going to, right now we're in the process, I believe, of rerouting Forest Road. So to square it off of the highway, I mean, you want it, but the state is.
It's dead in the water right now.
Right. Oh, it's dead in the water. Where would you put the one access to your frontage road?
Straight across from the north access that I have now coming in Grandma Tommy's.
So north of the intersection?
That is correct. North of Forest Road.
Just a question.
Okay, great. Any other comments, questions? Well, good luck. I guess I'll have to come back to whatever you petitioned for and then see what you can agree with or disagree with when it comes to Kay and then bring it to John.
Well, I guess what I'm seeing is, you know, I want to bring in what you guys think. I mean, I see that there's some, some negatives about the adding the extra acreage, but I think that negative is because it's drawn on, it's drawn on the board, you know? And plans are subject to changes, especially when you make a comprehensive plan like that. There's new visions and stuff like that. You see stuff after, when people come in, you know? I think you're seeing that for me.
Richard, you came in and you wanted the four hundred and fifty feet.
That's correct.
Right. So.
Okay. Okay, your choice. The other way is to petition for a zoning amendment to allow and then it'll be like talking to the big guy up there.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry. Sorry, we can't be more concrete.
I don't know what's going to come out.
Okay. Any other discussion on that one?
I need to just say one thing, that our comprehensive plan also has some paperwork in it on trying to attract businesses into our town. And I don't believe by trying to discourage somebody changing their property to commercial and, and bringing business in, there's something we should be doing either, so.
Well, wait a minute though. That is what I'm trying to do. I'm not saying he can't change commercial. It's just the distance, you know, was sticking with the comprehensive plan. And when he presented it, everybody at, there was four of us at the plan commission who said that we were in support of him getting the four hundred and fifty feet changed to commercial. So, I mean, it's, it's not a point of commercial. It's, it's what the footage is. Are you going to do the whole lot or are you going to do the four hundred and fifty feet?
I think what happened here, this went back to your trying to correct the zoning to the property lines and straighten them out. And we're.
Now we're doing that, yeah?
Kind of convoluted the whole thing to go.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, and Steve did just.
The answer is no, you cannot.
Oh, come on.
What did John ask for?
What? I just was saying that, you know, we're not, back to Chuck, we're not trying to, you know, discourage anybody from building anything. It's, you know, I'd be more than happy for them to.
My whole point is that the, the comprehensive plan is a tool. It's suggestions and.
All right, yeah, it could be either way.
But there's some big properties there too.
And as Dick stated, you, you look at them individually. You know, each one has its merits, so.
This is kind of a mute argument until he actually applies for the rezoning.
Yeah, but he was trying to look for some guidance and we're just confusing him.
I'm not. I'm telling you to go.
All right.
My comment was when Steve first presented it to us, he only mentioned the four hundred and fifty feet, which is why it came out that that was our consensus. We were in favor of his development. We thought it would, it fit in with our plan. And we did say unless new facts are presented, John. So these are new facts. You don't want the forty-three A. You do want the whole parcel of forty-four A. We're considering squaring things off. So I don't think we're as far apart as.
Okay, I, I think you can make your application and we'll.
I'll have another say at it, look at it anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dorconne Bicycle Pedestrian and Recreation Plan. Dan had just finished reading everything there is to know.
Dorconne.
Anyway, we do have a couple of copies. If anyone is interested, I believe it's up on the web as well. On the county website. And it's there for an FYI, so do no more. Dorc, Contracts and Contract Approvals Discussion, Mr. Wade.
Okay, I, I just wanted to bring this up as a discussion item. Based somewhat on my confusion with the, the actual contracts that we have or contract we have with the Spring Green Company for Landscape Services, mainly pesticide applications to the park. I would like to see all contracts for services, materials, both private and government vendors, be presented to the town board for approval, you know, and spelled out. I would also recommend that when we do contract with private vendors, that we limit those to one year, one year contracts. And we, we do not do any pay ahead on contracted services. And I'd also like to see maybe some more transparency in when we, we request proposals for these contracts. And we also, we do actually do an RFP to private vendors on contracts.
Well, I want you to know that we have accomplished that in the past. It's not anything that's new. Your particular interest is in the application in the landscape. And that's the only one that you've brought forward to this group so far. But what I've done, I've asked our clerk to take a look at the number of contracts that we have, not only in the past year, but those that have been in place for the last hump teen years. And I think you're going to be very much surprised in knowing that we do have contracts that go to about, number wise. We are into, I'll just give you a couple of animal control, accessory services, audits. We are into, I'll just give you a couple of animal control, accessory services, audits, cable, Clark Lake Beach, Clark Lake Ramp, Clark Lake Dam.
Right.
Clark Treasures under contract.
Right.
And fire protection, the town hall and the grounds, wall field.
Government agencies, right.
I mean, we've, we've got them all. We, and intergovernmental.
I think, you know, just this particular case, I mean, I think it was confusing whether or not we had a one-year contract, a two-year contract. And, and I think.
If I can stop you. This has been a bone of contention with you since you've joined the group and each time you attack it from a different perspective. Now, if you wanna sit down and go over these contracts, you're very much entitled to, any one of these contracts, you're having your own copy if you like or else taking a review that was there. Previously, you were totally opposed to a two-year and when I went to the attorney, I was told that we are to honor the two-year and if we wanna do something in the future, it's fine.
Yeah, you know, that's why.
But we aren't gonna throw good money after bad because you don't wanna go to a two-year contract.
Well, I, I think there's a certain amount of risk in developing a two-year contract with a private vendor. I mean, you're, you're basically contracting and if something does happen to that vendor, I would much rather prefer a one-year contract and that we review it every year. Because there's also, I mean, in this particular case, I'm, I'm not gonna debate this issue of pesticide applications to the town park at this point, but I think, you know, it's good that every year we bring this subject up because there are a lot of concerned individuals in the town's vast pool that made their concerns known to me anyhow about this contract. And I think it's, it's representing their interests that every year we bring this up before the board as a one-year contract.
Eight, nine years, so. What I'm saying is none of these were executed by the town clerk or by me individually or by a supervisor. We all, it all came here for.
Right, and that, that's what I'm asking for. And in this particular case, I'm asking for a renewal on this particular contract, limiting it to one year and then bringing it up for discussion on a yearly basis.
Okay, we'll share that with you and you can have your questions ready for us next time.
All right.
Okay, we have no other action that we can take on it because it's there for, didn't really know what your discussion was going to be about. Okay, authorization for payment of the February and March two thousand and fourteen vouchers, bills in lieu of the March two thousand and fourteen board meeting. I need a motion to authorize payment of those bill.
Move that we authorize payment of the February, March twenty thirteen vouchers built in Queens.
This would be only in the event that there's no March meeting, so.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, we'll leave it up to the clerk. We do have, we'd have a resolution filed.
Yes, we do.
Authorizing, okay.
Yes, for timely payment.
All right, any question to come in?
I think two of the supervisors, the cats got their tongue. Okay.
Say what?
I said, two of the supervisors can second and make motions too.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If we have a resolution on hand, do we need to bring this up for review?
The resolution is for time-sensitive payments, as in the utility bills, which are usually payable before the next board meeting, so, but this would cover all of the bills that we incur from tonight going forward to the next meeting, which would be April.
Fourteen.
April, our annual meeting is April fourteenth, the regular board meeting would be April twenty-first. Obviously, we're gonna have a lot of bills in that timeframe.
I'm with you.
Homeowner well-water testing program through the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point.
Skip the debt service on the town.
All right, number five would be the notice of the principal and interest payments. And this would be the PFM company interest, note of interest here is that the two checks need to be cut this time around. It's the interest separate of the principal. Is this the first time go around on that?
No, our March debt service payments are always separated, principal and interest. It's interest only in September. So, there again, this, obviously, this is one of the bills that you just approved payment of. It's going to be due March first. Interest of seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, principal of ninety-five thousand and free information, that'll take us down to a principal balance of four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
All right, so we're, we're already committed on that and there are no, no action necessary.
We should probably start to plan for a mortgage burning party five years out. Get a committee going.
Oh, sure.
Okay. I think it would be interesting to know.
Save all the paper.
How this bill is being paid, where the funds are coming from and the, the system that has been worked out to pay for this building as far as using the tourism tax dollars.
And we thank you for all your efforts in bringing that money.
The actual taxpayers of the town of Subastia Pool have not had to put any money for, for the payment of this building at this point.
It was a good decision, whoever made that decision. All right, number six would be the homeowner well-water testing program through the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, only because Linda has been involved with this through Jacksonport and other participating townships. Why don't you give us a quick one and then Victoria wants to talk on it as well.
Okay, I'll try to make it quick. This came before the board last fall, October, because there were costs involved and the distributing, the advertising and things like that, no action was taken. I recently had several phone conversations and several emails from Jerry Visti, who is the president or chairman of the Door County Environmental Council. The environmental council has offered to cover five hundred dollars for the promotion of this program. That's basically what he said. The town of Jacksonport is most likely proceeding. The town of Sturgeon Bay, I believe their board is gonna be addressing that issue this week. They like to have about a hundred participants between all the municipalities that jump on board. The two thousand and thirteen participation involved the town of Egg Harbor, the village of Egg Harbor and the town of Bailey's Harbor, they had one hundred and ten participants. So, they did reach the hundred mark and they did go forward. The test results are kept confidential to the homeowner, however, the town would receive some mapping as to which wells were tested. The prices range depending on how comprehensive of a test you want. It can go anywhere from forty-nine dollars to a hundred and ten dollars for the full package. As far as promoting in our local media, in the newspapers, costs could run, I did get some estimates for a quarter page, black and white ad, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, I'm sorry, two hundred and ninety-five dollars in one publication, two hundred dollars in another publication. If we can jump on board and get Jacksonport and Sturgeon Bay, we just run one ad, our cost would be covered. The environmental council, Jerry Visti, would be happy to come out and do a presentation if you like. There are other water test kits and outfits that will test your water. Door County Sanitarium's department will test it. E from moist water will test it. There's a lab in Luxembourg that will test it. And Mr. Lutzen also gave me the website of an outfit that will test. Again, prices range, how comprehensive a test you want. So, that's sort of it in a nutshell. The testing would take place in July or August. The homeowner would need to come to the town hall, town hall or whatever arrangements we decide to make. You need to get a sample bottle, you need to have it back to the town hall or the collecting station on a date specific, and that's mostly likely gonna be a Sunday. So, that sample needs to be here on Sunday. It needs to be delivered to Stevens Point on Monday. No deviation from that schedule. And that's all I know.
All right, that was the cost that, what do we have for a cost to do this?
Uh, the total, it can range, depending on what you want tested. I did look at it and there are like, oh, there's gotta be like twenty elements here that they would test for. And depending on what package you choose, it's anywhere between forty-nine dollars and one hundred and ten dollars.
There were three tests. The first one was forty-nine dollars, that's the homeowner's package, test for chloroform bacteria, nitrates, chlorine hardness, alkalinity and pH. The metals package test is forty-two dollars additional, tests for arsenic, lead, copper, iron, zinc, calcium, magnesium, magnesium, sodium, potassium and sulfates. And then the DACT screen package tests for the breakdown of the component, atropine and pesticides, another twenty-seven dollars. If you took all three packages together, you paid a hundred and ten.
Okay, I see, really dependent on what you wanna have accomplished and the other sites that Linda gave you as far as E from Luxembourg and Mr. Lutzen with H two O six, was it? They're down in the area of twenty-five dollars. Victoria had asked permission to speak on this, so.
I think Linda covered the subject very well. I want to express my support of the homeowner well-water testing program. We test our water every year on, I live on Cherry Road, and it would cost us probably two hundred and thirty dollars to accomplish the tests that they have if you add the homeowners and the metals package together. If you add the pesticide test, it would be another, it would bring it up to five hundred and fifty dollars. We use clean water testing in Appleton and have used them for many years. So, my husband and I consider this a real value for our dollar and we'd like to see the town participate. And if we can't participate here, we were gonna ask Jacksonport if we could participate with them.
Mr. Lutzen?
I take my tests up to E from water testing and it costs twenty-three dollars for a one test. Now, in the meantime, I do take my own home well tests. I get these through the internet and these, these tests cost around twenty-three dollars, but you get two tests out of one, one kit. So, you, you can, you know, you can split your test up and do it oftener.
What, what exactly are you testing for? Pardon? What are you testing for?
I get, I believe it's eight, it might be ten, but I, I believe it's eight tests and it tests all your, all your main tests that you have to take. I could have brought it along, I don't remember them all, but, I mean, I do this all year long and it pays to test your well. But I don't really believe the town board or the township should get involved in going through water testing for people. They can do this themselves.
This is not anything that we would do. We would go with the Door County DCEC, whichever that is.
Door County Environmental.
Environmental Council, they're, they would make five hundred dollars available for us to bring that to the attention in the media, to promote it, but the actual testing that you wanna have accomplished would be up to you or me or anyone else. We aren't gonna use any county or town.
The package, the package they represent, that they present here is definitely a good deal. Now, the, the atropine, acetylene inhibitor one really only targets a small group of pesticides, insecticides. So, whether or not, you know, that's worth the extra twenty-seven dollars, probably not. Most pesticide tests are very specific as to the pesticide that you're looking for. So, this is kind of a general for one definite group of insecticides, so. But the other tests, yes, I mean, keep in mind that all these elements are background elements in the soil right now. So, I mean, you're always gonna get a detect at a certain level for a lot of these things, so.
How many tests do we have to take on this place per year because of commercial line? How many, the E coli test you mean?
We, we test the, this, being a public building, we test quarterly, quarterly, Jim.
Yeah, how many tests, four?
Quarterly.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, these samples go to Stevens Point and I had suggested to Mr. Visti, because there are so many people concerned with their well water, why don't they get a local effort going between the sanitary's office instead of, you know, giving the university students summertime work? Why not?
Does the town board know what's causing the problem?
Pardon?
Does the town board know what's causing the problem here and the high school?
The high school's E coli. That's a group of, a group of bacteria in the E coli, genus and species E coli. Okay, there are specific strains within that, that species that are more, we're more concerned with than others, but when they test for chloroform bacteria, they're testing for a group of bacteria. Right, doctor?
Yes, that's what I was gonna ask you. Otherwise, big concern would be arsenic and heavy metals in Door County. And my question is, after you test your wells, and you have done this, Mr. Lutzen and you, Victoria, what do you do if you get a red flag? Do you retest?
Well, last year we did get a red flag. I will go into all.
Well, it's all confidential, they aren't gonna tell us about it.
No, I mean, they don't have to, but I think, you didn't or something.
We retested twice and are using some mitigation and I'm looking for more.
Gotcha. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, so the matter before us is whether or not we want to accept their five hundred dollars.
I think the program is a good program and anytime you can save our constituents' money by getting a test for them at a, at a reduced rate is a great deal. And the water concerns are a big problem here. My only concern with this program is where do we find a volunteer who is willing to spend their Sunday sitting here at the town hall, collecting the samples and driving them down to Stevens Point for Monday morning? So, you know, the program was presented us, no cost to the town, yet we're responsible for collecting the samples, passing the sample bottles out in the first place and then collecting them and transporting them. So, I mean, if we, we talked earlier that any further expense on projects like this or that, we should be looking for grant dollars or whatever to help support these programs. This is one item that is not in our budget for the year. Costs may not be that high, but it's just one thing that's not there at this point, so, something to consider.
I have one comment. My concern is that it's not a twenty-four hour sample. I mean, the instructions are very clear here. When we draw the water sample here, it has to be at that lab within twenty-four hours. My only concern is that, okay, fine, you came and you picked up a bottle whenever and did you draw that water sample on Sunday afternoon so that when it gets to Stevens Point on Monday morning or Monday afternoon, is it within the twenty-four hour period? If it's longer than that, something could grow in that sample and then you're not really getting a true result. That would be my only concern.
When you take our sample, does it have to be refrigerated too? Or how do you?
No, a regular water sample does not have to be refrigerated. A nitrate or nitrite sample does have to be on, on dry ice.
Those have to be nice.
Yeah.
Just an insulated.
It's just in an insulated container that's sterile, and then the same day we take it, and we take it right down to the post office and it gets overnighted.
I mean, the onus, the onus would be on the property owner, make sure that sample is taken when you said you took it, because you, otherwise, you may not be getting a true result.
You wanna be here on Sunday to collect those?
No, but it sounds, I mean, Jerry's letter indicates not only a $500 to cover the promotional cost, but that it sounds like they, Door County Environmental Council would assist.
Yeah, they'll get the volunteers.
Yeah, I, I, I just think it's, it's an opportunity, you know, and I, I can't see a reason why we wouldn't participate, especially when all our costs are basically gonna be covered, and the Environmental Council is willing to become actively involved in it.
So they would take it to Stevens Point then, too?
They would see that we transport it. It sounds like they're committed to this program.
Why don't we, why don't we do it this way, as long as you're into this kind of a thing anyway? Why don't we show our interest in the $500 and it'll make you the point person to get her in motion?
All right, I would, I would move that we, that Vasco Pool Town, Townes-Vasco participates in the well-water sampling as outlined by the Door County Environmental Council.
That's pretty long, yeah, ready.
And we accept the $500 as the cover of promotional costs, and, okay. Do you think that's too much?
No, that's all right.
No, I have it all.
You, you forgot to add, and Mr. Lloydman would be the point man to get it in.
That could be, that could be determined.
With the understanding that you're gonna be the participant, I'll second the motion. You don't have to be the collector.
I don't hear an amendment to that motion. I'd be willing to assist in the program.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion, comment, question? Do we need to send Mr. Visti a letter, or what do we do here?
First, we should vote on it, maybe.
Well, I'm asking what we're gonna do first.
If, if you test your wells and you find out it goes bad, it is bad, what's the remedy? Because guys...
Now, our involvement is only on the fact we're advert, we're gonna do the 500 bucks.
We're gonna do the promotion.
Do the advertising and let everybody know it's there, and if you want to participate, fine.
Let's make sure that we're only the vehicle and not the response.
Twenty samples sitting on the front doorstep that go bad, that wouldn't be good.
Right.
Okay.
Especially if it's July or August.
Any other question to come in? All in favor, signify, say aye. Oppose? Okay. Approval of vouchers, bills, and claims, January 21 through 2/24, looks like it should be 2014 through, you have a motion to that effect?
Move that we approve vouchers, bills, and claims. Second.
You have any questions on any of them? All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution number seven, supplement for temporary vacancies of elected officials, I see, were doing a supplement to 2013 county rule.
Can I address it, or...
I believe that the list of names we had that were running short of election officials.
I know, I was bragging to all the other towns, like, we have over 20 people on our poll worker list between the party and our unaffiliated. However, April 1st, due to candidates or spouses of candidates and ethicals and principals and all that, and vacations, and health problems, I'm down to just nine people. So I did talk to each of the people on this supplemental list. If need be, if I need to go to them, they are willing to work. So by statute, I would have to amend our poll worker list, so that is what this supplement to the resolution does.
We run a background check on one of these people?
Is this a one-time request?
Correct. This is a one, this is a one-time request. When you have a temporary vacancy for an election, it is a temporary filling of those vacancies. So one time, April 1st only.
I think everybody in the town's on the list sometime.
I would move that we approve Resolution Number 7, 2013 TB.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and it's carried. Correspondence, part of the packet, indicates increased cable theft penalties in Wisconsin, Door County highways, spreadsheet listing the private drives that had been plowed previously.
I just, is that, can I ask you a question following?
Sure.
Is that just November and December that appears there?
No, that is all of 2013.
Oh, January, December.
Yeah, right.
January through December 2013, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the other would be for the 2012 calendar year, the Department of Administration, payments for municipal services and payment in lieu of tax, Emerald, Wisconsin Emerald Ash Water Program, and two fire reports, January Fire Department and December, and at your desk tonight should have been another sheet to December of 2013. As well, we do have utility updates, there'll be a recycling day, Sturgeon Bay Utilities, and a price list on the bottom, if you wish to bring your product there. Also, hotline digger, hotline meeting, and a, looks like you even get a free meal, John, if you wanna go.
Well, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, stay all day.
Denmark or...
You can't go wrong.
Nothing there that we need to worry about. Yet also, the clerk's gonna be on vacation from March 6th through the 13th.
What?
We're all gonna get a card?
No, won't have to any time to write cards.
Okay, the next supervisor meeting will really be at the call of the chair, if in the event there's need for one, otherwise we'll not have one. Spring election is April 1st, and do we have any agenda items for the next meeting?
I'd like to see if we couldn't get Fire Chief Herlash to do some kind of a community presentation on fire alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, and the meaning of the signal at which they put out. Seems that we have an awful lot of false alarms because the battery is dying in this machine, and it just beep, 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 it's not sending out the actual warning signal, but people still call the fire department. I mean, a little education might help save some dollars on the fire department's end, and it'd be a good program for them to put out.
Okay. I do know that they do that, so...
Sometimes those false alarms, too, are the ones that have the automatic.
Yeah.
People, people come in and they type the wrong code, or the kids are there and they don't have the right code to cancel, so they're, you know...
But as you read the report, it seems like there's an awful lot of them, their, their smoke detector wasn't working, or the battery was dead and it was sending out a signal to replace it.
Well, correct.
It's just a little, you know, something they could do. Tim is always saying they have nothing to do anyway, so give them an opportunity.
We'll do it, I don't know if we can, it'll probably have to be after April.
We could use the town hall.
Maybe, maybe the annual meeting would be a good time.
It'd be a great time.
Draw the people here.
Okay, one, one item of interest, not good news, for those of you who knew our previous clerk treasurer, served our town from 1996, came aboard as our treasurer, and then elevated and elected to the position of clerk treasurer in April of 1997, and served through March of 2001. Carrie Sartner by name, at the age of 57 years, departed our company over the weekend. If you, if you remember her, and even if you don't remember her, keep the family in, in your thoughts and prayers.
And her son was an employee of the town park for a number of years as well.
That's correct as well. In between she and her husband Frank, they did a lot for the town, so...
Her father was also on the Board for many years, Jerry Colombo.
Jerry Colombo was a father. Okay, do we have anything, is there gonna be a service up here, or...
I haven't heard the details yet today, I kinda watched for...
I've got Saint Peter and Paul, I heard that, but I don't recall, I think it's tomorrow. Tomorrow or Wednesday.
Okay, with that sad news, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we are...